Board session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this thirteenth day of July 2023. Please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We have our deputy town clerk, Kim O'Tady here. Kim, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Supervisor Schneiderman.
I'm here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Skivoni.
Present.
Okay, so we are all here and we will begin today with a topic. I know this is something that Councilman Skivoni has been working on for years related to tick-borne illnesses. Maybe Tommy John, do you want to introduce this one?
Sure. Thank you, Jay, and thank you to the board. This morning, we have Karen Wolfrot from the Resource Center at Stony Brook, Southampton, and Dr. Scott Campbell from the Suffolk County Health Department. And the town is looking to be part of a program from the University of Rhode Island regarding ticks and making people aware of ticks and tick bites and what to do at the point of contact. And with that, I'd like to invite Karen Wolfrot and Scott Campbell, Dr. Campbell, up to the dais here.
Please grab seats.
We are all members of the Suffolk County Tick Control Advisory Committee chaired by legislator Fleming. There's a number of us on it. And Dr. Campbell chairs the committee, well, Bridget chairs the committee. You run the meetings. And so we do a number of things to make people aware of tick-borne illnesses and the spread of ticks and what to do if bitten by a tick.
I hear this is a pretty bad year.
We'll just circulate them ourselves. Make it easier.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Put this on my chicken plate.
Do you have this for all of us?
Yes. I'm going to want the signs back.
What signs?
That was the best part.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
That's okay. I'm good. Thank you.
First thing.
Thank you.
Okay.
And you're going to need your phones too for this little exercise.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
Scan.
I'm actually more interested in that. That's a cool little thing. Thank you. Yeah, that's a neat thing.
Okay, thank you for inviting us here today. I am Karen Wolfrot. I'm the administrative director of the Regional Tick-Borne Disease Resource Center at Stony Brook Southampton Hospital. And I have my esteemed colleague, Dr. Scott Campbell, from the Suffolk County Department of Health, the arthropod born division lab chief. And today, we have come to tell you about a program that we have become aware of. A couple of months ago, the University of Rhode Island approached Scott. Dr. Tom Mather is the director of that particular program. And we have worked with him as long as the Resource Center has been established, and that's been since 2014. And Dr. Tom Mather actually did come to Southampton probably seven years ago, and we hosted him for a community forum at our parish hall. It was on a Saturday morning at 10:00, and he came and we had a full house with attendees from all the residents of the town of Southampton.
Was that 2017?
No, it was before that. It might have been 2015, I think. So he's familiar with the area. He's worked with Dr. Campbell for a number of years on sampling ticks in the area. And so in July of 2022, the New England Regional Center of Excellence in Vector-Borne Diseases was funded by the CDC. And that's comprised of the University of Massachusetts Amherst, which is the lead university, Northern Vermont University, Western Connecticut State University, University of New Hampshire, University of Rhode Island, Dartmouth College, and the University of Maine. And this entity, which they call Nuvec for short, is partnering with universities in the New England area to, basically, they're looking to research, operational research in the field, training the next generation of public health entomologists, and developing a community of practice to address public health needs. We are part of the community of practice. So, under the University of Rhode Island, they have come up with this project. And they have identified mainly ticks in Wells, Maine, Anaragansin Indian Tribe in Charleston, Rhode Island, Mashapewam Apo tribe on Cape Cod, and the Connecticut Land Conservation Council in Middleton, Connecticut. And then they wanted to invite us because they realized that the eastern end of Long Island is endemic for tick disease, and they wanted to include us. So they came to Scott and me, and they asked us if we would participate with them. We talked to them. I, there was a nominal cost to be involved. I am funded this year by a grant from the Island Outreach Foundation. And the Island Outreach Foundation agreed to let me use some of their funds to join up with this endeavor. So what they have given us is 25 of these signs. And if you take your phone out and train your phone on that QR code.
Or either.
Okay, click you. Sometimes it's a little wonky, but it will give you the link to, mine isn't working. Can you get yours to work?
I already know where you are.
Are you already there?
Yeah.
Wait, there it is.
You might have to do Wi-Fi in it.
It's recognizing it now. There we go. Okay. I guess I'm a guest user. Okay, so, everybody there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, somebody coming into the trailhead. Oh, welcome to the internet, town of Southampton. Okay. It's never easy.
You gotta click accept.
Oh. There we go.
And the cell service is not good inside the building.
Now I've got your website?
All right, so now you can just close that.
Okay, got it.
And then re-scan.
Yep. All right, so we're at, be ready for ticks. So somebody coming into the trailhead would read our sign here. QR code it, and then this comes up, and it says, be ready for ticks. You're standing at the start of the trail, and the sign says, so they see the sign, and what should you do? And right now, the three most important actions to reduce your risk are tuck in your shirt, tuck in your pant legs, scrolling down, stay in the middle of the trails, and then know what to look for. If you click on this, it will take you to a section of their website, which goes through all the different ticks that are active in the area right now. Deer ticks, Lone Star ticks primarily. Then it tells you when you get home, throw your clothes into the dryer first, and then wash them. And do a tick check. If you found a tick on you, and you click on that, it will take you how to remove the tick, how to take a photo and upload it to their website, and they will identify the tick for you. They do that within an hour at the most. Sometimes it's really fast. That way, you know if it's a Lone Star tick, you're not at risk for Lyme disease, but there are other things. If it's a deer tick, you will know that too, that's a Lyme disease risk. When you're going outside again, be ready for ticks. All these have links too that will take you to the Tick Encounter website, which is the one that's run by the University of Rhode Island. Then it will tell us that they're proud to sponsor with the Regional Tick-Borne Disease Resource Center, gives us our logo, and then a link. You can click on that, and it will take you to our website. And also, if you want more information about Nuvec, it will take you there. So this is a unique endeavor on their part, and the whole idea is to, instead of loading up somebody with preventative tips that they may or may not get on a webpage or at an outreach meeting that the Resource Center does, this hits you right at the trailhead and tells you, here's three things you can do right away that are important to keep yourself safe. And that's a different kind of approach. And what they want to see is, is it going to make a difference in people becoming aware and being safe?
So right now, preventative measures for tick bites is really our best defense?
Just in time.
I mean.
Yeah.
So now, this is a study with the University of Rhode Island. Can you speak to that, Doctor?
Sure. So, the concept is just-in-time learning. So it's somebody that may not have prepared. They're a visitor. They don't know really that the risk is there. They come up to the trailhead, they see that sign, they're like, oh. They scan it then. They don't, they may not have repellents with them, right? So one of the suggests is an applied repellent, because they may not have those. If they're already, if they already know about it, they will have already used repellent. But this is, what can they do at this moment that they can reduce the risk of tick bites? If they have repellent, that's, they'll know to do that. But it's, you're not giving them that option here because they may not have that option. These are things they can do at that moment, at the trailhead, with what they have, and that's basically their behavior. So it's tucking clothes in, using that clothing as a barrier, staying in the middle of the trail. The edge of the trails are more at risk of contacting ticks. And then, what are we really looking for? And then they can, they can look at the tick species that they may come in contact with. So this QR code is specific for us, not, so it takes us, it takes them to this page with the Resource Center. So they'll be able to monitor usage. So that's a really good thing compared to other, the other five or the four pilot programs. And we'll be able to monitor that. We'll have access to those data. We'll be able to share that with you when it does become available to us. So I think it's a very new concept. I mean, they're really just working out the kinks. I mean, it's like hot off the press with regards to the opportunity to use this just-in-time learning. I don't know of any other location or any other group using it, other than URI and the five sponsors that are involved. People can buy the sign or use the sign. It's available, but this is kind of looking at the data and trying to understand usage. There's also a survey linked to it, and this survey has about 10 questions. They're very basic. It's about a five-minute survey. It's going to be put out by Karen through the Resource Center. There would be the opportunity for the town to put it out as well. It's basically basic information about ticks, behaviors, knowledge about ticks, and if you've seen the sign. So we'll put the sign, the plan is to put the sign out first, wait a month or two, and then put out the survey and see if people are seeing the sign, using the sign, and then we'll be, we'll have a better understanding of, is just-in-time learning appropriate, working for tick-borne illnesses and prevention of them? So that's the goal. It's so new, it's really, other than, hey, let's give it a try, there's not a whole lot that can be said about it with regards to, you know, any kind of data other than where we're at right now.
So are you working with our Trails Committee and those groups locally?
We're going to be meeting with them on August 1st, and Cindy McNamara is our liaison to the Trails Advisory Committee. And we've identified about 26 locations, various trailheads where this would be appropriate. We have a lot of trails in Southampton, and they cross roads and, you know, but the areas where the parking, the trailheads with parking areas, I think, are, would be our first, would be the first locations.
We have 25 signs, and I had asked, I put a little extra mark in the check that we sent them, and I asked if that would cover 25 more signs, and he said yes, and he can have them in two weeks.
Okay.
I mean, the Trails Committee can tell you in five minutes what the 25 busiest trailheads are and have them out deployed in days.
Right.
I think it's great. It's easy to use the app. I'd like that a lot, be able to identify the tick too. I had Lyme disease for almost 10 years, way, long time ago before they knew it was Lyme, so I really appreciate what you guys are doing. And I love this, because, you know, the first question as well, okay, what kind of tick is it? And you get instant feedback. I tried to, I thought you were going to scan it, so I drew a drawing of a tick, but it projected that. It's, I, but it, I, I mean, how much of the signs? Can people donate to you to put more signs out? Or are you at that phase?
We paid $5,000 to be a part of this whole thing, and then for 25 signs is $800. And they gave us the first 25 signs for free. And so this extra $800 that I built into the check will purchase another 25 signs.
I mean, in addition, they should go with the wildlife.
Yeah, there's a lot of places.
There's other places that, there's a lot of heavy foot traffic that are necessarily trailhead that.
My backyard.
Well, we want to get started. We also want to incorporate the villages as well, you know, with their parks and everything, and really get the entire town covered.
Is this year particularly bad year for ticks? There was reports that it was going to be because it was a mild winter. Is that the experience?
It's very hard to say bad year, good year.
It's good for the ticks.
Yeah. And the reason I say that, it can vary, like, the South Fork can vary from the North Fork, can vary from Western Suffolk. So because, a lot of the population of ticks are driven by rain events, and we know that it can rain in Southampton and be sunny in Huntington. So it will vary year to year, and because it's a two-year life cycle, a lot of this year's population is dependent on last year's population because they're growing through that two-year life cycle. So, so a lot can happen. There are no, there's obviously no shortage of ticks. And a lot of people say that they've come into more ticks this year than years past, but it's.
Are you seeing more incidence of tick-borne illness?
So that, those data we get from the state, and that's inherently delayed because of, they have to research, actually look at the case files and things like that, so it gets delayed. All the tick-borne illnesses are on our website, and it's, you know, kind of will go up and down because the tick population will go up and down through the, you know, environmental factors. But they just changed the case definition for Lyme disease, and they're just going to be looking at the lab tests. And in 2022, this is the first year that they've implemented just looking at lab tests. So if an individual has a positive lab test, they will be, they will qualify as a case, or if they have an erythema migrans rash. So it will, I think, markedly increase the number of cases and give us more of a truer indication.
You want to look for a moment, it's going to skew the data.
Correct. You won't be able to compare it, because in years past, we've actually looked, instead of looking at all the cases, we've only looked at 20% and kind of extrapolated. So you're going to see an increase, a huge increase, because now we're kind of counting everybody. But so, but in the long run, I think it's going to be more beneficial to really see what's going on.
And how much of that is affected by people going to their doctors and just getting doxycycline without being tested? You just get a couple of doses and to treat it immediately.
Right.
I mean, it just doesn't get measured.
Yeah, so, you know, reporting is inherently have issues. There's, it's not 100%. And they're hoping, CDC is hoping that by making it specific to just the lab test, that they're going to get a better idea of really the number of Lyme cases and try to, try to take that issue out. It's never going to be perfect, but I'm hoping that we will get a better idea of exactly the impact of Lyme disease.
Is the town of Shelter Island still measuring the amount of doxycycline?
So, so.
They were doing that as a.
They try, everybody tries to really get a handle on the impact of tick-borne illnesses, and it's very, very difficult. And looking at doxycycline, even though doxycycline is given for a variety of infections, they're just looking at trends. They're not saying, oh my gosh, there's been so many scripts, and now it's going, this is how many cases, but they're just looking for trends to see if there's any change in the trends.
Isn't that part of physician education too?
You know, immediately, my doctor gave me a Western blood test, that's what they used back then, and it was immediate, but other doctors may not do that. So a lot of people go to Southampton prior care, the hospital, so, so is that part of your, your goal?
Education is a part of the Health Department's approach, as well as the Resource Center. They, the Resource Center actually has a lot of educational outreach to the medical providers to try to educate them about all the various aspects of tick-borne illnesses, as well as the Health Department does as well, has that outreach. And we do an awful lot of outreach to the public as well. Karen and I are great collaborators when it comes to library talks and town hall talks and things like that. We try to get tick bite prevention information out as much as possible, because really, that's where it starts. An individual has to own it, and that's why this is so important, is that they, we're trying to empower them to reduce their risk. And we do it, you know, through this just-in-time, as well as through our outreach talks and brochures and things like that, webpages.
In the folder that I brought for you today, you'll find a variety of information. The Tick Handbook is something, that was our COVID project in 2020, and it's a 50-page, full-color book, everything you ever wanted to know about ticks and tick disease. Dr. Campbell is also an author. And anytime anyone asks for a tick-removable kit, they also get that handbook. I would have brought you a tick-removable kit, but unfortunately, we burned through all 1,500 that we had for this year. I have 2,000 on order, and they should be arriving in the next week or so. So we'll be able to start supplying everybody with tick-removable kits.
Is the QR code for that app in here?
Is the what?
The QR code that.
The last page is a copy of the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. Yes. And there's also a listing in there for all of the outreach events that we're doing this year on the left side in the back.
When you say "we," the regional?
Regional Tick-Borne Disease Resource Center. And you'll see that Dr. Campbell is a speaker in a lot of those, because we have been collaborating quite a lot over the last couple of years.
So I just wanted to say thank you to Stony Brook Southampton on a personal note, because my prior work was landscaping, so if I basically got tested or treated every time I got bit by a tick, I would never leave the doctor's office. So my doctor and I came up with a plan to just test annually for a whole host of different tick diseases. And a few years ago, I got a phone call after my blood work came back, and it was the nurse practitioner, and she said, whatever you do, don't eat any meat. Went through this whole thing, said your numbers for Alpha Gal are off the charge. And I'm like, I had a bacon cheeseburger for dinner last night. So that led me to the website, where I actually found a.
Oh, the video.
Speak by Erin McGinty. And I guess it turns out, because I've gotten into so many Lone Star tick larvae nests, that I guess my body has just learned how to deal with it. But my numbers, according to my numbers, I should go into anaphylactic shock every time I touch, you know, red meat. But it was, it was interesting in that this was a local doctor that didn't know that, and I had to find through you, I had to find, you know, Erin's, was it a webcast or it was a, it was a talk to local doctors, I think she did.
Yes, it was, yeah.
And, you know, to where I could be like, okay, I'm okay, I'm not going to die, you know, and go on from there. But it's amazing, the amount of new information and the lack of information, even amongst local doctors in our own area that see this every day.
We have a medical symposium. We've done three so far. They're day-long medical symposiums. We hold them at the college. We bring in experts from all over the country to speak. The last one was last spring, and it was very well-attended, but, you know, you can bring them to the pond, but you can't make them drink, you know?
Obviously, my doctor never heard Erin McGinty and never, you know, didn't know who she was, so.
Right, I mean, it.
I said, here.
On the other hand, I got to counter, because my doctor knows everything about ticks.
There you go.
And, you know.
They're all good for different things.
Does it right. And, you know, he's running, he's actually running for trustee. He's decided that he wants to go and, you know, do more of this community work, which I applaud him for. And, but, you know, he gives you the lecture. He's read the book.
Right.
Yeah. It's good stuff.
So we plan to do, if we get funded by the Island Outreach Foundation again for next year, we plan to do another symposium in the spring of 2024. We couldn't do one this year because they're fairly expensive to create, and we didn't have the funds to do that, but hopefully next year, we'll be able to do it again.
And that's open to all medical professionals on these?
Yes, yeah, nurses, doctors, everybody. And it was funny, because the first two that we put on, it was like pulling teeth to get the word out and to get them to come. We filled the house every time, but this past one we did in Avram Hall, which is a capacity much greater than Duke. And it's funny, because this spring, when a lot of them didn't hear from us, they called me and said, oh, did I miss it? You know? So the one year we have, you know, interest, we couldn't do it, but we will do it again next year. So that's, if you look at our mission statement, one of our goals is to educate physicians as well as.
Yeah, but having it online and being able to access it just for me was, you know.
That's great, because that was just fairly recently that you did. Yeah, we reorganized our website and put all the videos in one spot.
Well, I'll give you your sign back.
Oh, thank you.
How precious it is.
Tommy John, you can keep your sign, I guess.
Great sign. Terrific sign. Great website, very easy to navigate. That's one of the issues sometimes you have when you go on these medical websites, you can't find really what you need. Pretty much in order, everything's great. I can think of Good Ground Park, where we have our concerts, is one tonight, has a small trail on it. Inevitably, we have four or 500 people for the concert, come early, bring their kids. You have 7,500 kids running these trails. We don't spray for ticks in our parks, and inevitably, I get those questions, you know, what do I do? This will be right at the trailhead, that would be, you know, terrific. And also, we have Foster Avenue Park, which we get probably the most complaints about ticks anywhere in the town. There's not a trail there, it's just a playground. Yeah, playground, but, you know, the sign doesn't say "trail."
And Good Ground or Camp Teckawitha are the ones in Hampton Bay that we identified, but Foster?
Yeah, Foster too.
So sometimes the edge of a property can be ticky, you know, can be, can be at a high risk of ticks, especially if kids are involved, they're throwing balls, they're, you know, things are going off into that edge, and off the kids go. So you can have that contact, or just walking along, if it's, if there's some vegetation hanging over, you brush against it, you can contact ticks as well.
Yeah, they hang with their little, little.
Yes, they're questioned, right. So, so you don't necessarily need a trail to have risks. So, yeah, so any of those areas where there's, there seems to be complaints from the, from residents saying, hey, you know what, I'm coming into tick, contacting ticks all the time, that would, that would be a perfect spot for these signs.
Great.
Couple of questions while I have your expertise here. So if somebody gets bit by a tick, should they go see a doctor or not necessarily go see a doctor automatically? And, you know, I know I'm often bit by those, the NIVs of the Lone Star tick. They're, it's like hell, but I don't typically go see a doctor, get myself tested when that happens. So what's your recommendation if somebody gets a tick bite? Does it depend on how deep the bite was, or whether they get the bullseye rash, or when should they go see a doctor?
Well, you know, again, I can't offer medical advice, but really what it comes down to is the type of tick and how long that tick has been attached. Because the pathogens or the germs that cause these. Because the pathogens or the germs that cause these diseases, it takes time for most of them to be transmitted. There's, there's, that time, it basically has to move from the gut to the salivary glands. And that takes anywhere from 24 to 48 hours. For Lyme disease, it's about 36 hours. So, if you do frequent tick checks and you know that that tick has been on for less than 12 hours, the likelihood of any kind of transfer of any pathogens or germs is very low. So, even if, you know, a lot of people, I get questions about testing ticks. They, they, they've been bitten, they take it off and they'll be, should I get this tick tested? And even if you look at CDC, CDC does not recommend tick testing. Because even if that tick is positive, it doesn't mean that it transmitted the pathogen because you may have gotten it off earlier. If that tick is negative, now you think, hey, you're free and clear. But you missed the tick that actually fed fully and transmitted a pathogen. And you're like, oh, no, I got the tick off. I, I don't know why I'm feeling sick. I got the tick off, but, so I don't have a tick-borne illness. So, the recommendation is you go by any kind of symptoms. And because they are diseases, instead of just going by the tick, tick testing. So, when, with regards to, should you go to your doctor? I think it's more of a personal decision, one that you have to make on your own with regards to your, your medical wishes. But again, the most important thing about that is frequent tick checks. I, I always tell when, when I give a talk, when you brush your teeth, morning and night. Because what will happen is if you pick up a tick in the, in the day, you may miss it that night. But if you check the next morning, that little tick is bigger because the redness around the, the bite is just more than, you know, that. And it, and it kind of pops out, the tick, you know, attached. But it's only been less than 12 hours, but you can see it. So, whenever you brush your teeth, basically do a tick check and you're going to reduce your risks, the risk of tick-borne illnesses.
Ask you some prevention questions.
Sure.
It was mentioned spraying yourself insecticides. Is there a particular type of chemical? Is DEET still recommended? Is, what is the, the best thing to spray on yourself and where should you spray it to prevent tick bite?
Okay, so the, there's a, a number of repellents out there. If you go on CDC's website, they actually have probably half a dozen. All of them are EPA-registered. And, and what that means is there's science to back that EPA registration. They know how effective it is. They know how long it works, how often you have to reapply it. So, they recommend only EPA-registered pesticides. There is one, permethrin. It, it's only for clothing. And it's extremely effective at, at repelling ticks. It kills them. If ticks get caught in your socks and you've sprayed it, they will die. There was a study out of URI.
Is permethrin DEET?
Permethrin, no.
No.
Permethrin is a, is a, is a chemical. It's actually from chrysanthemums. And it's been modified so it lasts longer. You spray it on your clothing, on your clothing only, it binds. And when it dries, you can actually wash your clothing for six, six washings before you have to reapply it.
Where do you find it?
You, you can buy it anywhere. You can buy it in department stores and hardware stores.
And it says permethrin?
It'll say permethrin, yes.
Amazon has it. It's a spray box.
Yes, yes. It comes in pump spray.
It's non-toxic to humans?
It's only toxic to invertebrates like ticks and fish. You can't use it around fish. So, and, so you, they, you actually can put it on your dog and, and, and spray it into the, the dog's fur. So, but again, with any repellent, you need to check the label, make sure that you're following the label and its application rate and where, where to apply it. But permethrin, a study out of URI, 74 times more or less, less likely to get Lyme disease by using permethrin just on your shoes and socks. That was a study that came out of URI. So, permethrin is very good for clothing. You don't use it on your skin. And then there's several other like DEET, picaridin, that you can use on your skin. And again, that washes away. You have to reapply it, so you have to follow the label. But all those repellents have been found to be effective against ticks and mosquitoes as well.
And now, you mentioned also, or Karen did, the putting your clothes in the dryer first. So, normally, we put them in the washing machine and then the dryer, but the, I guess the heat will kill the ticks?
Exactly.
Okay.
And ticks, ticks don't, nothing, they're not impacted by hot water, bleach, soap. So, they'll live, they'll, they'll live through the washing, but they don't like dryness.
The other thing I wanted to say on the prevention side is, you know, you mentioned staying in the center of the trails. And then I was at a trailhead the other day. It was actually in East Hampton, Buckskill Reserve, and I, I did not hike it because it wasn't maintained. There was no way, even walking down the middle meant that I would be brushing constantly against vegetation. So, I think it's really important that we maintain trails to a certain minimum width if, if we can, particularly in these areas. And, you know, that falls upon, you know, our trails maintenance people. But, you know, I, do you have a recommended width for a trail? Is five feet or six feet?
Yes, it's five to six feet is, is the recommendation. Also, you have to know what the trail base is. If it's grass, it's going to be riskier than if it's wood chips. So, that's the other thing. You can cut it back, but if it's going to be grass, it, there's going to be a greater risk because that's holding moisture, whereas wood chips or dirt is drier. So, it's going to be less likely to find ticks in those, in those paths. But that, it's, it's actually very, very important to maintain trails.
So, the last thing I'll, I'll say is, you know, we do a public, we do a lot of public outreach. And one way we do that is through our CTV, our TV station channel. We have both Channel 20 and Channel 22. And we certainly invite you to come on our show. We could spend a half an hour just talking about ticks and preventing tick-borne illness. Maybe Tommy John and, and the two of you, if you have the time, might be a way to, particularly this time of year and in the fall, it's another really bad time, be able to get some messaging out there to the public, maybe make them aware of this campaign as well.
Yeah, we could talk about the campaign. Do you want to talk about Spanish?
Sure. So, i- i- in the development of this, first, we'd be more than happy to do any kind of outreach and, and talk with Tommy John and, and come up with the information that you want to get out to your residents. Speaking of which, when we started this program, one of the things that came up was a Spanish side of it. Currently, there isn't. We will be working with them to translate. I have, I have Spanish-speaking staff. We're going to translate not the entire Tick Encounter website, but just the information around this, be ready for ticks. So, it is accessible by those that only speak Spanish, which I think is very important. We have, all, both of our programs have Spanish translations in the, all our brochures and things like that. But again, you know, it's very, very important of the, of the five pilot programs, it's very important here. So, we're going to be working with URI to get that translated.
And what we envision is putting a sticker on here that will say, you know, say habla española or something like.
Yes. That there, there'll be a toggle on the webpage so it can be read in Spanish.
Great idea.
Is that QR code ready to be shared now? Could we put it on our social media? We can do all that now or?
Actually, we, we don't want to put it on social media. We want to put the program on social media. But if you put the, if they start scanning it in their, in their living room.
They're seeing it at the trail.
We're, it's going to be, yes, it'll, it'll be recorded that somebody scanned it. And we really want the data to be at the trailhead. So, we really don't want people to scan it other than at the trailhead.
So, for information, for information purposes, how about the link to the website?
Yes, you can, you can, you can send it, yes.
You can, you can link to tickencounter.org or, and also to the hospital website and to the Department of Health's website.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think when the survey gets rolling, all that stuff, that information would be appropriate as well, so, yeah.
So, that's the five, actually seven because I scanned it twice.
Yes. So, yeah, I, I'm, yes, every time, we've been scanning it as well, you know, to see. And so, that should all be.
Probably prior to the date that you put out the sign.
Correct. And so, that, that is, I, we, we are trying to find out exactly what's captured, the date that it scanned. They believe the time is scanned as well, but no personal information. It's just that, that calendar date and, and hopefully the time that we can, will be captured and we'll be able to see how it's being used.
And that copy in your folder, I am not sure that that's going to get you to this specific information.
But if you.
It's your information.
Again, it, it, because.
No, because, because.
Oh, did you print it off of that?
I printed off the, the, what he had sent me a while ago. I'm not sure that that QR code is going to take you where we want you to go exactly.
If you go to the bottom and it doesn't say Southampton Hospital, Tick-Borne Disease Resource Center, and it says Bartlett Tree, it's the others, the other one.
Okay.
Obviously, you can't tell from looking at a QR code.
It says Bartlett Tree.
Does it? Yeah.
Yeah. So, but if you had, if you still have the, the one from the sign or if you want it, we can.
Tommy John's going to keep the sign.
Yes, so, but if you save that, if you, you know, on your phone, you should be able to go back to that one.
One on the website too, I assume that one is accurate.
Yeah, all the information's accurate. It's just not specific to our project.
Right.
All, all the information's the same, but we actually have a page, a mirror page, so we can, we can quantify use in our project for Southampton.
So, that one's on the website. That's not accurate?
No, that will take you to their general page.
Okay.
Yeah, the one that, that says Bartlett Tree.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I go right back to the, the app I got off the sign.
Because Bartlett Tree is a supporter of the University of Rhode Island's tickencounter.org.
Right. So, we're keeping them off of this sign.
Right. That's just specific to us.
Good. I think this would also raise awareness for what you all do at Sonya Brook Southampton with the Regional Tick-Borne Resource Center. Very unique. We're fortunate, very fortunate to have your institution out here, you know, for our community, for, you know, our health professionals and people alike.
Yeah, it's been fun over the last eight years and we just have a problem with funding and, and hopefully we'll be able to keep going.
Well, this is a good start.
The pandemic.
Yes.
It kind of has put this whole thing on the back burner.
Messed up our funding big time, but so far, we're hanging on.
Right, and a lot of people went into our parks during the pandemic. They were widely used.
Yes, they were.
Before we go, could you tell us some of the research that Suffolk County is, is doing?
Sure, so most of what we do is on our webpage. So, if you go to our, we have a tick-borne page. Under the arthropod-borne disease lab, we have mosquito page, a tick page and a bedbug page. If you go to our tick page, you'll see a lot of information with regards to tick bite prevention. And you'll also see the information of the number of cases in Suffolk County. We have it by county, by the whole county, over the last 10 or so years. And you'll also have, we have 10 surveillance sites, one of which is in Southampton. And the ticks that we've collected, we actually test them for the pathogens. So, we have infection rates and so you can look at all that information. So, we have a county-wide tick pathogen surveillance program to kind of get, you know, again, the infection rates varies greatly over distance. But at least it kind of gives us an idea of, you know, that one site in Southampton versus the one site in Brookhaven versus the one site in Shelter Island. So, we have a, we have a site in each of the 10 towns, just to kind of give us an idea. And, and to be honest, you know, most will fluctuate year to year and it will fluctuate between sites. But they're all very similar, so.
Good to have the data.
Yes, yes. We have to start somewhere.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you both.
You're welcome.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I'll have somebody follow up with you about scheduling that TV show.
Great, thank you.
We will be in touch.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
All right, so. We'll do some updates and then we have executive session. Yesterday, we held the Supervisors and Mayor's Association meeting, East End Supervisors and Mayor's Association, which I chair, and have for some time. And it was a well-attended meeting. It was out in East Hampton. And they actually, we had our own Ryan Murphy there as one of the presenters, our head of our Public Safety Operations Code Enforcement, et cetera. And so, we talked about hurricane preparedness, which he's an expert in because he did it for the county and he's done it for us. We did talk about battery energy storage systems, which is, I, I know something we'll be talking about in executive session regarding moratoria. And, but, you know, other towns are going through similar reviews of battery energy storage systems, including Southold. The Supervisor Russell was there. They just imposed actually a one-year moratorium. We all, Ryan also talked about special events and some of the concerns around special event planning. And, you know, there were questions for Ryan. He was one of two presenters. The other presenters were two individuals from the Eastern Region Helicopter Council, which were kind enough to come out to answer some of our questions about these flight paths, this, the November route, the Sierra route, the Echo route, and why certain routes are chosen. Of course, Peter Van Scoia, the Supervisor of East Hampton, was there too. And he sort of explained that they're sort of powerless to manage their own airport right now, that they wanted to make sure that everybody knew that they were doing their best to try to address some of these noise issues. But the courts have basically taken over control of their airport and their airspace. And so, they are unable to state which routes they believe are the best routes. They're unable to impose curfews and limitations. So, the, the presenters from Eastern Region Helicopter Council, you know, we asked all kinds of things about, you know, what about flying higher? What about staggering routes? Why did they reinstate the November route? And they did have answers to these questions, not that we're going to like the answers, but a lot of it has to do with conflicts with fixed-wing airplanes or even with other helicopters or weather limitations. And, you know, right now, they are using November, which used to have a different name, used to be the power line route. But the November route is being used for entry and Sierra for exit. And, you know, there's only, there's a limitation of height. They can fly at 3,000 feet, but one of the things that was explained is that as you go higher, actually, your cone of affected people increase. The noise spreads out a little bit further. And as you go lower, you, there's an issue in terms of the speed. I think that as you go higher or you go lower, you have to move, you move faster or slower, whatever. I can't remember now, but there was a trade-off. That going, going higher wasn't necess, wasn't necessarily better in some ways. And lower, I guess if you lower, you're, you're moving quicker, so it's a little bit more noise, but smaller duration.
Is that relative to helicopters?
To helicopters, yeah. And the only mandatory route was, is the North Shore route that Senator Schumer got in place. Everything else is voluntary. They have a high degree of compliance with the voluntary route. I asked the council representatives if they were willing to meet with groups of residents that are living with this nightmare. And they said they would come back, you know, to meet with some representatives of some of the neighbors. So, be working on setting that up as well.
Could I ask you a question?
And there, all the other thing they talked about is technology. I, you know, whether that, when we would see quieter helicopters. And, you know, it seems to be like a five or six-year window, but the technology is there. They just have to do a little bit more testing and production. But the quieter helicopters, which I guess are battery-powered, are significantly quieter. But they're not, it's not going to be, in, in their opinion, it's not going to be next year or the year after. It's probably. It's probably more like a five or six-year window.
Yeah, it's actually, actually a design of the, the question I wanted to ask you, though, was, did, was the discussion come up about FCal and the commercial hub that's being proposed?
No, we really focused on East Hampton, a little bit on Grobresky, but, but primarily on East Hampton. And there were mayors and other elected officials from other regions. Riverhead Supervisor was not there. But, you know, you know, we had West Hampton Dunes, and we had Quogue, and we had Greenport, you know, a whole bunch of people. By the way, there, we got to introduce a lot of the newly-elected officials as three new mayors. Sag Harbor, Tom Gardello, the new mayor, was there. And Greenport, a guy named Kevin Stussy is the new mayor there. He was there. And Southampton Village has Bill Manger, and Bill Manger was there. We also had presentations by.
Jay, before, before you get a question or two. Did they, did the Eastern Regional Helicopter Council talk about why they discontinued the November route in 2021?
There was some talk about this, and it was something related to the court. And they were, I guess they were, they were, they tried the 21 in, in, before, I guess in 2020, just to go all water. But apparently, there's just too much density of traffic in that area that make, to make it safe. And so they had to spread it out a little bit, and so they, they're using those two routes. Their explanation was a public safety concern.
Was that there were, there were fewer flights in 2021, so they were, so they changed the route. Were they only used Echo and Sierra, Echo being the northern route, and Sierra being the southern route, and then along the ocean?
Yeah, it could, it could be that, but they said it was a, an air safety issue, that they couldn't have so much activity in that area, moving in both directions, and too many conflicts. But, you know, I, I'd like to have you at the next, there, because I know you've been working closely with the residents. And, you know, it's interesting, because, you know, they, they seem like they, they want to help the situation. There's certain, certain limitations as to what they can do. They, you know, East Hampton is certainly wants to help. They're really trying to do things to lessen airport noise. But, you know, there's just a high number of users, and the technology is inherently noisy at the moment. And the courts, there's, some people were being careful what they said because of all the litigation. But a lot of this stuff is tied up in court. So, you know, we'll see what the court does on this. I, I wanted to mention that there was a presentation by Assemblyman Thiel, and by legislator Fleming, and by legislator Kropsky. That's part of the reason why this organization is so effective, is because we share all these same concerns, and we work together, but we also have an audience with other levels of government. You know, and one of the things that were brought up is this eighth penny sales tax increase, the, the water quality surcharge, whatever you want to call it, tax. And it is unclear whether the Suffolk Legislature will put it on the ballot. It is unclear. It's possible. There might still be time, but there is a, there is a chance that, although Albany has authorized a referendum, that the legislature won't permit it. In which case, this November, there won't be a vote on this new fund that will help deal with some of the nitrogen issues that we're experiencing in our base.
And establish the whole district, which is important to us out here.
No.
Is it a pushback on the, the fund itself, or just they don't want another tax?
I have no idea.
I know when they were here, they, they said that there were questions as to whether or not it would pass because it was East End-heavy.
Yeah, it's not really East End-heavy. Most of them only goes to Western Suffolk.
But there was question over the, is getting funding for IA systems?
There's 370,000 sanitary, yes, sewer, not, there's like 370,000 traditional sanitary systems that need to get converted. Most of them are in Western Suffolk.
I was at the Suffolk County Legislature when this was presented and debated, and what the legislators were saying, the ones that voted, or actually voted to table this particular resolution, they were saying that the law favored IA systems.
That's what I was.
Too much rather than funding sewer systems, and that they, they just didn't believe that that was a valid reason to have, to have the vote. I completely disagree with them. Some places, I mean, you know, that's what I think. Some places IA systems work quite well and are necessary, and some places sewer systems are, are better. And you get more bang for the buck, but it depends on the location, and they just did not see that, and, you know, they, they tabled it and seemed to be running the clock out, because this resolution would have to be at the Board of Elections by August 7th.
Yeah, the, the only thing, the only thing the legislation allows, it's different for the East End, is they recognize that we can't have as many sewer districts like they do in the West, because of the density issues, topography, geology. So the only thing it does is allows us to be taken into consideration for IA systems, which are really critical to our, our estuaries and base systems here.
And that was my understanding, that most of the representatives were from up West, and they favored more sewer districts versus IA systems. That's where that, that's really East End-heavy kind of thing came into.
You recall, we had a, you know, they had a, they presented to us, you know, Peter Scully was here, and that was a big exception. That was important, you know, to be fair.
There was also some, there was also some confusion, and I think lack of understanding about the priority areas and the one-to-two-year travel time, and that the legislature, that Suffolk County could literally expand that to a, to, to a zero-to-five-year travel time. And then more people could be captured with the IA systems.
Well, when we put the IA system law in place originally, it was supposed to go to a full mandate, but COVID interrupted that process.
There's also.
And there was a tax issue, too. Where the Controller Kennedy wanted to make that taxable income, and we just solved that problem.
I think some of the Western legislators look at the county only in terms of population, and that, you know, that, that maybe, you know, 90% of the population is in Western Suffolk. Like, you know, something like the sales tax, this is a sales tax. And we generate probably a third of that money, maybe even more, out on the East End. A lot of it's from construction materials, you know, because of the, you know, the big homes that are getting built. And, you know, you know, at best, a third of the money comes back under this. We also have a lot of geography. We probably have half the geography of the town, of the county, and we have a lot of the, the water, the, you know, the surface waters of the county. So we sort of have to change that thinking to only look at population and say, okay, where is the need? Where is actually this money coming from? You know, a question came up about can you, can you have a sales tax that's, you know, can the East End generate the sales, to have the eighth of a penny and have it reserved for the East End? You can't do that unless you had a iconic county, because it's at the county level that these sales taxes are authorized. So we don't have that. We have Suffolk County. And we're sort of stuck now, waiting to see if they'll authorize this, so that we can let the voters actually decide whether they want to impose this. And, you know, my sense is they will.
Right, and that's an important point. This would be authorizing a public referendum to see if the voters want this.
So in, the last thing I'll mention, because Cindy's probably got to mention, is I did go to the North Sea CAC meeting. I normally haven't been going to CAC meetings, because I assign liaisons to each of them. But I, I did get an invite, an invitation to, to discuss the North Sea Road project, which isn't a town project, it's a county project. And, you know, my advice is to basically all work together, figure out what made sense there, what makes sense. It's a big county project, a $16 million project. It's, we talk about the county not wanting to spend money on the East End, and it's very unusual to have the county spending that kind of money on the East End, and you don't want to lose that money. That road needs repaving. There seems to be universal consensus about repaving the road, universal consensus about bike lanes, universal consensus about drainage, and quite a bit of controversy about curbs and sidewalks. And so, you know, I did speak to Bill Hillman, the chief engineer at the county, the next day. And, you know, they, they certainly seem willing to work with the community and to try to come up with a new version of the design that addresses many of the concerns. The ambulance has concerns about egress, making sure that they can pull the ambulance out expeditiously. Businesses are concerned about parking. And, you know, the county said that they would come back with a revised plan for the public to review and comment on at some sort of community meeting in late September, early October. I asked the timeline for this project, and it, they had been looking at doing this repaving toward the, probably the end of 24, 2024. Not like the winter, but fall of '24. Now it looks like it's more likely to be spring of '25, because they're making all these revisions to address community concerns. And there were questions raised at the North Sea meeting about, will this urbanize the area? Will it speed up traffic? And, you know, really, when I raised these issues with the senior traffic, the senior engineer with the county, you know, a lot of it comes to road design and, and lane width that actually could reduce speeds. It could create more of a sense of place in what I guess is the downtown North Sea area. Because right now, you sort of fly through it, where North Sea Tavern is, and the hardware store, where you have, you know, the general store, and you don't even realize that you're sort of going through the North Sea downtown, if there was a downtown. And there could be ways to do plantings and beautify that area in a way that actually slows down traffic and creates additional parking. So my message was sort of, let's figure this out. Let's not chase the county away, because we'll lose the money. They'll end up spending it somewhere else. Let's figure out what works for the community. Let's invite as many participants in, and, you know, and make it beneficial. And, and I, and I agreed to get back to the committee, which I did. I talked to Stephanie McNamara, who's the chair, yesterday, after speaking with Bill Hillman. And I forwarded the county's position on it. I also spoke with legislator Fleming after that. And, you know, that's sort of where it is, and Stephanie, Cindy, you may have a different take on it, but, you know, that was my impression of it.
Not really a different take. I would just start by commending them for the work, you know. We, we talk about CACs and community outreach, and that CAC really does do a great job of trying to get the community involved. They use their own money. They put out lawn signs saying when the meeting was and where it was, so that people could show up. They sent out emails to everybody on their email list to try to get people there. There was a, there was a good turnout, I think, for a CAC meeting. That was a, that was a good turnout they had at the community house. And there are, you know, they have concerns. They just, they want to see, I, I think their biggest, their biggest complaint and their biggest fear is that the original plan that we all saw, that we had Tom Houghton put his comments and concerns on, they were not happy with. I don't think anybody was happy with that plan. So I think they're, they're kind of like, they've been asking the county to come and to speak with them, and the county has been speaking with business owners, and I think some members of the ambulance service and the fire service. But they really want more community input, because their fear is that they're going to get a plan, and it's going to be, this is the plan.
Yeah, I asked Hillman about that, the engineer, about whether the county, I said there was some concerns at the meeting, that the county, because it owns the road right away and has a certain way of doing highways, would just sort of, if, if they didn't like what the community wanted, they would just do it anyway. And he said that would not be the case.
Okay.
That they thought they could resolve some of these issues, you know, you know, let's figure out where sidewalks make sense, where they don't make sense. If they don't make sense anywhere, there'll be no sidewalks. If they make sense in certain areas, there would be sidewalks. And maybe there's some opportunities for the town to work with the county and the residents, and the businesses in particular, in creating some additional parking that would actually help the businesses, because right now it's very limited. So, anyway, anything else you want to say about the meeting?
No, just that it was well-attended, and, you know, they just, they want to be involved.
Um, I did ask whether, I brought this up at the meeting, too, but I did, then I brought it up with the engineers. Could there be renderings? Like, could the county?
Like sketches?
Hire someone, yeah, there are companies that do photorealistic renderings. Like, here's what it would look like when it's done. Here's what it looks like now. Here's what it looks like finished. And, you know, you can't even tell that that, what it looks like finished is a simulation.
Well, because that's kind of what they want to see before they pay an engineer to actually put it.
Well, it was also something that was discussed.
And Bill did say that they, that he would look into that, and he thought.
Because it's going to save them money in the long run.
He thought that that was reasonable.
Well, I'm, I'm a little confused, because when we had a virtual meeting with DPW at one point, early on, it was quite a while ago. I can't remember exactly when, the, the subject of sidewalks came up. And the idea was that there are different types of sidewalks, and people didn't understand that. So I thought they'd agreed to do renderings already to show, show the community.
No, and that's what the community said, and that, you know, Jay had brought up, there was a project in Springs.
Yeah, because that's a DPW responsibility.
But they asked, where in Springs? Can we go look at it? They want to go see it.
It's near the school, I think on Springs Fireplace Road.
Okay.
But it's, shouldn't be so hard to find.
So I, I felt we had a commitment already for DPW to do that.
It's the whole road. They redid the.
Oh, Springs Fireplace Road?
Yeah.
And, and it seems to be widely, you know, applauded as a good project. And that's a very rural area, and one that is not shy about, you know, participating in local government.
Well, I'm glad to hear that they're willing to.
I spoke it as the former supervisor.
They just want, they want a visual. They want to see what's being.
Well, I'm glad that, that they're willing.
Yeah, that's why I'm confused, because I thought that's what.
Yeah, but the sidewalk project for County Road 39, which I was on that Zoom, that is completely on, that's been pushed back, but now the money is being used to do a corridor study. The $2 million really needs.
So the folks who came here a couple of town board meetings ago, they, they were saying no sidewalks, did not want sidewalks, no sidewalks, period.
Most of them still pretty much don't.
And so I'm glad to hear that the CAC is, is willing to work with the county, you know, to see what sidewalk, because. I, I think in years to come, 10 years, if we don't have, if we put this road in without a side, well, not us, it's a, it's the county. I, I, I think folks will be regretting it in, in the future.
I think the overall message, Jay can correct me if I'm wrong, was that they did not want the debt, the businesses downtown to be hurt in any way, shape, or form by losing parking, or egress, or anything like that. They actually had an issue, too, with.
Would that end rural character?
Yes, and they also, they also stipulated that, and it made sense, because North Sea Road is a, is a pretty fast road. A lot of the sidewalks on North Sea Road, a lot of the driveways on North Sea Road have very wide openings, so that you can kind of go in on an angle, whereas the county was saying that those openings would now be the standard width, which would make them have to go in at more of a 90-degree angle and potentially cause some issues. So there's, there's, there's issues. I mean, there's legitimate concerns that they have, and I feel as long as those concerns are addressed, they're open to, you know, at least seeing something. They just want to see something.
Yeah, I, I think, in addition to what you mentioned, again, the concern about changes that would actually speed up traffic by wider lanes and things like that, they were concerned about that, and this sense that it might urbanize what should be a very rural, sort of historic area. And I, I think those are all valid concerns, and I think it really comes down to what the project consists of, how it's designed. It seemed like there was a willingness, as long as the county was willing to listen, to work together. All right, so that's in terms of updates. I mentioned battery energy storage before. You know, we'll, we'll take that up in executive session. I, I know that, you know, we're going to be looking at potentially having a notice of a, a hearing on a, a moratorium that would include not only new proposals, but current proposals, and try to figure out as a board what that should look like, how long that should be, discussing that with our council, and, you know, and then moving that forward based on, you know, the, the citizen concerns about the public safety aspects of these, these systems. All right, so other than that, do we have other updates?
Just, I got one quick one, with long anticipated, Andrew's built the Memorial Park Trail dedication. The long anticipated Andrewsville Memorial Park Trail dedication is scheduled for July 24 at 11:30. I will bring it up again next Thursday for information on that, but we will have the dedication. And unfortunately, the Eastport School has decided to redo its, its parking lot, so the parking will have to be around the back of the school. But we figured we, let's go forward with it, because it's been a long time coming. I just want to get it done correctly.
Tommy, do you have anything?
We'll figure it out. Yeah, we had a well-attended CAC meeting in Watermill regarding the fire station that the Fire District is, is proposing over there. So we kind of went through the difference between Fire Protection District and a Fire District, and the history of this particular Fire District, which is an interesting one. And the Fire District is holding a meeting in Watermill tonight, a commissioner's meeting. So the folks are, in Watermill are aware of that. And the commission, the Fire District Commissioners are going to be available to answer questions. And this is really the beginning of the process, they still have to go to the planning board with their applications. And I think they're looking for variants too for some of this. So that's what's happening there.
Can you explain a little bit about what this Fire District is, how it was authorized, and what it does?
Yeah, the Southampton Fire District actually extends from Watermill to North Sea into Takahoe-Sinnicock Hills. It wraps around the Southampton Fire Department. Functionally speaking, the Fire District of Southampton and the Fire Department of the Village of Southampton act as one unit. The Fire District of, the Southampton Fire District was once a Fire Protection District, and the Town Board were the commissioners of the Fire Protection District. In 2003, the Town Board at that time changed the Fire Protection District to a Fire District, which means that the representatives are locally elected, and there are commissioners from the Fire District that represents the Fire District. And I think they've been doing a good job working with the village. As a Fire Protection District, we essentially get a bill from the village for fire protection. Noyac is a Fire Protection District, so is Bay Point and Northeast Quogue. And the villages, again, I believe that they do a good job, but they pretty much give us a bill and we pay it, and that's how we get fire protection there. In Southampton, they created a Fire District, and so they have, actually have commissioners that run the district and work with the village. How fire protection is determined in the Fire District is that the Fire Commissioners of the Fire District contract with the Fire Department of the Village of Southampton for fire coverage.
Right, so that's what I wanted to drill down on a little bit, is so we have this tax district.
Good stuff.
And people are paying property taxes who live within that border of the Southampton Fire District.
Correct.
And these commissioners that are elected then decide, you know, how much money needs to be collected and how it will be used. And they have been doing two things primarily with the money. One is they have a contract with the Village of Southampton to provide fire protection throughout that district. And the rest of the money, most of the rest of the money, has been used to slowly assemble the infrastructure needed to have, to not have to contract with the village, but to provide the services themselves. So hang on one second, Tommy.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure that that is.
Okay, will you correct me in a minute?
I do not know that.
So they have purchased two pieces of property, one on North Sea Road, and you'll see the big sign owned by the Southampton Fire District. It's a fairly large property on, you know, North Sea Road. And they purchased the property in Watermill, not far from the Burden Park area, that, you know, that will be, you know, opening a park there. That's in a fairly residential location, and residents are concerned that a firehouse in that location, you know, with a lot of activity and whether it has ambulances, I don't think it does. But I, I thought that that property was going to be a substation. I was told that's going to be a substation, mostly storage. Now I'm hearing the plans may have changed, and that's more of a firehouse. And I think some of those residents are concerned about the activity in that residential area. I, we haven't really gotten a clear report from the Fire Commissioners as to what their timeline is. Are they going to be having, you know, providing their own fire protection rather than contracting it? Will they be able to find volunteers? You know, it's challenging, there's a lot of questions, but you know, we don't, we're not commissioners.
Right, and they are a separate entity, and this was something that was discussed at the, at the CAC. And you know, what their goals are, are in fact those, they're, their goals. And tonight is the Commissioner's meeting, and so the residents get to ask those questions of the Commissioners themselves. We don't direct the Commission.
Are you going?
Yeah, I'm going to go.
Okay, yeah, I can't.
Wouldn't miss.
What time is it today?
Seven or 7:30, I'm not quite sure. Now, as far as coverage goes in Southampton, the main firehouse is on Hampton Road, just up the street here. And there's another firehouse in the village itself, and there is a substation on the western part of the district on St. Andrews Road and Montauk Highway. So the easternmost firehouse is located in the Village of Southampton on Hampton Road here. And so they, they would like to get something further east. Now, the size, the location, substation, you know, that's something that the Commissioners have to answer with the community, in my opinion.
Oh, so it's possible that it would be a substation used by the village?
It's going to be a substation owned by the Fire District. Again, these are good questions or appropriate questions, I just don't know the answers to them. You know, like what the future of the Fire District is and the, and the Fire Department. Because right now, functionally, they act as one, and I think they do a good job, you know, they're very professional. And the future of the ownership of the buildings and, and whatnot, you know, that's, those are answers that would be best posed to the Commissioners.
If it was similar to the St. Andrews substation, I don't think there'd be a lot of pushback.
The substation in the west is actually owned by the village.
Yes.
That was created before the Fire District was created, and we were a Fire Protection District, so.
No, and that facility I'm familiar with on St. Andrews, it's, there's not a lot of activity there, it's mostly storage.
Right.
So I think something along the lines of that facility would not be so objectionable. I think people are concerned about a larger firehouse and the activities, you know. Firehouses often have events, firehouses have seminars, training. You know, they have, you know, spaces for firemen, firewomen to gather. So it, it really, I'm not sure how they're using it, but I know that some residents that they've contacted may are concerned about how that site might be used. It's very different than the North Sea Road property.
Okay, I, I'm not pitching one way or the other.
No, I just want to know.
Yeah, right, it's a, it was a good question, and, and the meeting is tonight at the Watermill Community House. While we're talking about it, it's important for folks to know, you know, a Fire District is a separate municipality, and they do have their own elected officials, they set their own budget. And we do work with the Fire Districts, but they are a separate government, much like a school district.
Right.
Seven, 7:30 tonight.
7:30, thank you.
Do you have any other updates?
Nope.
All right, real quick, tonight at Palm Clock, 6:00 PM, Mike De Vera's Memorial Lifeguard Competition. So I want to wish our lifeguards good luck on that. And concert at Good Ground Park, Project Vibe at 7:00 PM.
Cindy, you got anything?
Just the North Sea CAC, what you covered.
Okay. Stolly Thunder. Okay, so we do have some executive session items, confidential legal advice, contracts, litigation, acquisitions. I don't know, I don't see personnel on it, so I'm assuming we don't have personnel issues. So I'll make a, a motion to end our work session and go into executive session on those items.
Second.
Second to my counsel, Bouvier, all fair and.
Hi.
Hi. You guys want 15 minutes before, just to get some food?